This is a special meeting that will be going tonight, so number three is approval of the agenda. And I have an item that I need to add, um, and that is, um, the board to approve Mr. Bishop asking Mr. Reed, attorney from Madison, to assist him with a court appeal involving Mr. Brooks and the legal island property.
I'm going to re-approve the agenda, Mr. Reed.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Um, now see that we've got the one item here for the farm, and I think back in my mind it seems like there was something else. Conrad, did you recall was there something else to do with something we were going to do so we could go ahead and look over?
I think there was an insurance issue, uh, that we, uh, did that settle up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, that's about the fire.
Uh, but was there anything else that we talked about last time that we wanted to special meeting for?
I think there was a discussion of, um, instructing the attorney to move forward with preparing a resolution for the fee for the incinerator.
Right, right. We can add that to the agenda.
But I don't know if we were ready to move forward with that until we discussed it during the workshop. I think that was the quandary, because that fee is within the fee schedule for, um, for solid waste fees.
Ooh, okay, alright.
Was it something that we need, that we need to do to done it?
I, well, because we can either do something consensual or, or something like that while we're in this special meeting. Um, I think that, from my recollection, the board is eager to move forward with, um, allowing contractors to bring debris to the, um, incinerator site. And I know that the fee that has been discussed, um, has been a certain amount, but I think Conrad did state that if he prepares a resolution for the two eight eight meeting, he could leave the amount blank. It could be set during that meeting. If...
The fee? And we're supposed to meet?
Sir?
At thirty AM. And we can prepare that when we come. Put that on the list, we can prepare, and then we can just take the list.
Okay, okay. And then ask them the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Now, they're saying on two out of eight, that everybody's saying that my son will be here. Yeah. It'll be real hard on him, you know?
(laughing) How would I mean it? So, it was the, the question was if he needed to add that to the agenda for the board's strategy, is tonight's agenda?
Right, okay. If you, if you had that as a, a, to the agenda along with what I asked you to do.
Okay, well, just go ahead and add it for now, so that's good.
Yes, ma'am. You would either vote your own hand or you...
Um, I guess we need to vote our own?
Then it's okay.
Um, I guess we need to vote our own?
Yeah.
And then ask them the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Now, they're saying on two out of eight that everybody's saying that my son will be here. Yeah. It'll be real hard on him, you know?
(laughing) That would argue. So, it was the, the question was if he needed to add that to the agenda for the board's strategy, is tonight's agenda?
Right, okay. If you, if you had that as a, a, to the agenda along with what I asked you to do.
Okay, well, just go ahead and add it for now, so that's good.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You would either vote your own hand or you... Or...
Um, I guess we need to vote our own?
Then it's starting, then it's starting to prepare that. If they have a little...
Okay, thank you, we have a motion by Commissioner Beaufort, the second side, Commissioner Murphy?
Uh, pardon, we've already approved this agenda, we need to go back and approve it? Yeah, add it to it? You can, you can say that, you can go back and say, uh, make a motion to read the way that...
(laughing)
What's here?
Hey, come.
It's gonna be there.
Hey, good, good.
I can't...
(laughing)
Where's your money?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, this is for the public hearing for the program.
Hey, 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 friends, how you doing? It's our birthday. That's right. They come around all over here.
Hey, there, now.
How you doing? Alright, okay, we're doing, I'm thinking about putting me on a page, twenty twenty. That'll work. That'll work. You brought smoke in the air?
Why not?
Might be a special gift. That's good. Alright, we're gonna take a... Sorry, you... Get them all on, go get it all. You're not hearing me? Uh, I thought I... I knew you saw. Yeah, I heard, I heard. Yeah. How was you? I had a really...
Oh, I don't understand most of them. I was prepared to be a student after, but you didn't see the light, you're down the road.
But I'm gonna give you some...
Well, you're fine though. Nothing on the same, I think we're good.
Well, I don't know, but I'm... I'm a little bit... I'm a... I'm a little... Yeah, so, yeah, I'm driving, I'm driving, I'm running oil, because we got a season, we didn't have one. So, he's out there too. Well, he's here, he's... He's in Dallas, he's in Dallas. Oh, that's good, that's good. Great guy. I'm careful, I'm having a little heart here. I gotta get a little bit of it, but I gotta wait on it. I don't know. Now, we got like a lot of them, they get their... They're scared of that. They're scared of that, they're all afraid of that. Yeah. I don't know, I'm trying to get scared of that. Dave, brother, come to us.
Do you think he doesn't want that?
I'm going to go back and ask him. Yeah, I love that. I just want to see if I can... Yeah. Yeah, I think about it. Yeah, I heard about it. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. What's going on? Yeah, I'm free. Alright, yeah, we have, uh, we have, yeah, we have... Bring it up to the crowd. Okay. Yeah? Uh, I heard.
Thank you.
I'm like a choir. I'm like a choir. Thank you. You're welcome. Our meeting's ordered, after one point stand, I'd ask you to present to the ladies and the prayer, and the father's prayer, which is like... Commissioner, yes?
Well, if you think you're right now, so, Paul, we thank you about me too, we bless your name, because your name is worthy. We need to, we bless your name, that you're the only name we've ever talked to man, we say, and we thank you every time. And we come right now, we're waiting for it, Richard, and his act, and the plan, and the proceeds, family, that they gave to both of us. Well, we thank you right now, of course, we've done your call, we thank you for what you're doing in the future. And we bless these people who serve you now in your church, we rely on your church, and we're here with you today. If you ask in worship now, please remember my place, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. Uh, well, the sense of all of, we have heard, the reason the box here is, uh, operating inside, it's legal. Is the way, whether hustling, you have a serious accident, tell that, that Thursday night, you can tell that you were in hospital. Away in surgery on, on the knees, I think, Wednesday. It doesn't happen all one day, and a muscle attached to the kneecap on the other leg, can't stand, so, so, you pray. I know she's been a lot on, on the, but, there's a lot of things through all this, Tom. Just, just, you know, I, I've been for a first, you know, I don't understand it now. Now, before we ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I have two additions to the agenda. I sticked on the agenda, the board wants to consider approval of assistance request to get on the court house property. And according to the commander of community, American League, post two nine one, that is tabled until later date. And then we need to add another item, item nineteen B, that is southern, solemn, our surprise election, is to address the board upon one member and one alternate member to serve on the twenty twenty canvassing board, that will be on nineteen D. This company, do you have other things you need to add to the agenda? Mr. Bishop, you may add?
No.
Board, now I ask for a motion that we approve the agenda and the minutes. I move, have a motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Moody, discussing, all in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed say no, motion carries, and we have approved the agenda. Now, that brings us to item four, this, this, public hearings, the active public hearings. The board can hold a second and final public hearing at this date, at six o'clock, or extend thereafter as possible, to receive public input and notify the public of possible grant application to the Florida Department of Parks and Recreation, uh, for part of the Recreation Development Assistance Program, commonly called a SPUR grant. That's part of the twenty twenty-one funding cycle. And this grant will request funds for assistance for additional approvals to the Taylor County Sports Complex. And I have, before we even, Miss Boosie, who I'm going to ask to help us with this money, walk in for you.
Okay, well, um, it's up to the board, for...
We have it, Ellen.
I have passed out, um, this information with Melody, this is what she recommends. Union is applying for the two hundred thousand dollar grant for the sports complex. Um, applying for that allows us to receive the maximum amount of points for this grant, um, which includes doing stage covering for the playgrounds, the batting cages, um, board goes, um, picnic facilities, the trail security lighting, um, some out, adult outdoor fitness equipment, and the repairing of the trails, the walking trails, and doing some landscaping. And doing those things allows us to get the maximum amount of points, um...
I read somewhere, I read, that many times, you don't have fifty thousand dollars.
Well, you can apply for the...
You can apply for a higher, about a hundred...
You can apply for the two hundred thousand dollar grant, or you can apply for the fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. So, we're applying for the two hundred thousand, and it's one hundred percent.
There's no match?
No, that's for us, one hundred percent, that's from six.
Right. And we can have three open SPUR grants at one time, that we can only apply for two in one year period.
Five.
So, we can apply for this one this year, and we can apply for two next year, or we can apply for two this year, one next year, um, whatever the board desires.
And again, the board has any questions to Daniel about grants, what can we say?
What she said, batting bases, walking trails.
What you said, batting cages and walking trails.
Uh, Louie, Louie Pay is a walking trail. I walk it. Can't walk more than a hundred yards in one. You got walkers, that's good, but you got five husbands, probably need to cut that off.
The guy down there on the backside with the roots are coming underneath, that's breaking it up.
The roots are breaking it up. You don't name anything. It doesn't happen for ten years old, huh?
I would think so.
And you don't name anything, it's gonna have a thing from all over the place. I, I have no objection. I did question to myself, this park is closed in the yard. Why would you want to spend eighteen thousand dollars on a lot of walking trails? But Jamie pointed out that we're up, we're up at some night, like they have ball games. And you can envision if you've got ball games, if you're gonna walk around that or adults. The board with the ball game, walk around the trail. So that's enough to do just about it. Anybody else, Jamie?
Like I said, um, it's the board's request, um, if they would like us to move ahead with this, or if they, if you want to do something else. Um, and then also, um, we need your direction as to if you would like to apply for a second FERDAF grant or somewhere else. We need to come to get direction on that if you want to, because definitely we need to get the public hearing underway in August.
All right, let's deal with this one first. Now this is a public hearing. I'm gonna ask anyone from the public wants to comment or ask questions about the submission of the grant and what the funds are used for. You have an opportunity to speak, comes to podium, state your name and address first, and we'll give you less than about three minutes to talk. And they're all come at once. All right, I'll propose the public hearing. And we need to-
I, 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 this is a second public hearing, so let them go ahead and take action, we need to go. And then Jamie, we'll, we'll come back and give you some direction.
I would ask that someone make a motion that will approve the submission of the grant application.
We'd love to buy anything, except by, uh, Murphy.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand dollars. Now, it's because you asked for it, we didn't get it off, okay? Not again. You don't ask, you don't get it. I have a motion in the second, we have discussions, and you want to go. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. The motion carries. So you can go forward and do a little bit of this grant. Now, in future grant, uh, we need to give you some direction. And I need first to have an opportunity to be informed about what other things we need when the grant is being used, primarily where our needs are. Now, we have a grant to do some work on the dock, that's two national dock, right? That's out there. I need you to vote for it. And what about, what about going out at sports complex? So, I asked the board, if you're gonna have your willing folks who prefer that grant, that has been used for recreation. Uh, submit that to Lamanda and him, you all come back and tell us, here are several projects that we think we buy, at least you prepared to do that now.
No, sir, I was going to say exactly what we discussed at the next sports complex.
That was true.
If that will get us enough time, that's the end of it tonight. Yeah, um, like I said, we'll have to, if we're gonna apply for another one, we need to get the public hearing underway in August.
Oh, we can handle that, because we got several workshops between that and August. But it's one thing to the other. And we need not worry, be thinking about proposing a few left, that's considered. All right, Jamie, thank you. You did good. Hey, look. Now, if I was counting on it. We're on number five on the agenda. The board can hold a public hearing that's at this date on, or six oh five PM. Or extend thereafter as possible on the Patrick team on the proposed ordinance. To repeal county ordinance number two twenty eighteen dash zero two, which has to do with sand Pedro and Zep, LLC. They want that attack, have their own tax exemption. And they, President Lamanda, this company, has sent some cars on it to the board through this staff, that he no longer wants to be considered and have this tax exemption. Now, correct the order. And so we've asked Mr. Bishop to draft the proposed ordinance to repeal that. And, um, that ordinance, there's no one thing you don't get, and you gotta use that. Some of you already have thousands of orders?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero two was provided in add four tax exemptions to sand Pedro and Zep LLC, providing separability and providing man-activity.
That's very clear. Now, is anybody in thought of one thing? Because I'm telling you, if the owner doesn't want the tax payment, he does a lot by far, the board's gonna vote and not give it to him. It's the right thing to do, so not much need to have, have anybody speak to us. Now, this is, I said ordinance, and I'm, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but ordinance will vote.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. You want a motion in the second? Then or just do the roll call?
No, we have to motion in second, then I'll be rolling.
All right, make a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Sam, second by Mr. Murphy. That's approved this ordinance. Discussing. Murphy. Well, anybody, nobody, uh, no discussion. The motion passed.
No, you have to do a roll call, man.
All right, no, I can't, we can't pass, we do the roll call.
Right. Commissioner Murphy?
Again, uh.
You're against? You're against? Okay, you're against now. Commissioner Dan?
No, I, I need some gravity. He don't want it, if he don't want it, I don't matter.
Because he didn't qualify, and he did see a free call.
Okay.
So if you want this, I ask, you gotta go there, because we're receiving that county order to break this one up.
Okay, we, we need to repeat, you know, that's what you want.
Yeah, yeah.
Because then I recall that vote for yet, it's received.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
The passes by you, not as well as we have.
All right, then pass. We got, we settled what we got to pass. That's just the effectiveness. Now, uh, we have listed consent items numbered six through thirteen. I read those, after conversation with the county administrator about them. I think they're all proper to be on the consent items list. Anybody want to have any of those taken off? And for separate actions. I haven't heard of nobody, and I'll ask for a motion to approve all consent items. A motion about Commissioner Moody, second by Mr. Bill, discussing, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. Motion carries consent items are approved. Now, item fourteen, Scott Nixon, those other members, he discussed new development with the federalated pipeline construction project. Can Jamie, that's what passed?
Well, we've been making good progress, uh, with the pipeline. Again, we've been working with your staff. Who has been very cooperative and very professional, and we always want to make comment about that, because we're very impressed with their, their ability and the way they work with us. Um, we've made great progress, just finishing one location, Downham Springs Road. And when we discovered the, the rock that we had to remove in that location, and the operations that we'd have to make, the traffic, we wanted to immediately come forward with board and make you aware of it, and, uh, and discuss it with you. So I'm just gonna turn it over to Chip, and, uh, let him outline it for you. We have some slides for you, we'll get this in, in that slide.
Good, I thought I'd take the opportunity to give you a quick update that you normally like. And so, we'll start with a quick update, and just remember the route, and of course, there's a, a, a good third of the entire route or more is on county right of way, and we're grateful for the county's support in numerous locations along the route. We're grateful for the, for the, the support of the community. Uh, just progress to date, next slide. Uh, things that as you're out there, you should be thinking, if you go along those routes, is, uh, the pump station is, is doing well just east of US nineteen ninety eight. Um, we also have been installing pipe along the south side of Carlson Cemetery Road and Holt's Road, and in the Terry Stevens, uh, loop there, we've completed the pipe installation right there along Terry Stevens. This past week, literally right before the Fourth of July, we actually went under the river for the first time. We actually did a, 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 installed pipe. We had to do that two locations, and we did that first location just south of Carlson Cemetery Road. We've also been installing pipe along the Hampton Springs Road across from the Correctional Institution. It's right down there, you'll see that. And then, hopefully you're not seeing that, because we've been keeping people safe, but we've actually been blasting down the dirt road to Peterson Landing, and because of the amount of rocks and all down there, and we, you all rammed us back in January, the ability to even close that road due to the, for temporarily, for that work to go on. We've also been blasting, um, out in the, uh, out into what's called Flea Creek there, right off of Peterson Landing. And so that work's been going on, uh, for the, for the past quarter, and since I gave you an update. Things are coming up. Uh, next slide that you'll be seeing is, we are getting ready to go under US nineteen ninety eight, and, uh, actually connect both sides of the road there, between the pump station site and on the other side of the river crossing. Uh, we, uh, we, I'm gonna show you a slide, we've actually worked with staff and D E P. We've actually, uh, found a way to minimize impact along the roll-off site, where, uh, we thought we were gonna have, we're gonna keep it obviously open, but we're gonna have more coordination there, and through the help of staff and Action D E P, we found a new way to interfere, to, to, to minimize interference around the roll-off site. We're getting ready to go under. Pocket roads will happen probably before the next time I come back and give you an update. And then, uh, of particular interest, we've actually determined we've got, uh, as Scott mentioned, we've got more and harder rock on the lower end of Hampton Springs Road than we originally planned, and we, uh, we do need to do some blasting up into the Hampton Springs Road, which is the particular part we wanted to give you an update. Because in the past, I've said we would never stop traffic through the Hick Pit Camp. And I, I wanna amend that based on new learnings, and we're gonna ask permission to briefly stop some traffic for safety reasons, going to Hick Pit Camp, and that's a particular point of interest tonight. Um, and, uh, we will begin installing pipe actually in the river, um, here before I probably get back to give you an update again. Getting ready to finish that blasting down there at the lower river, and we actually begin putting pipe in the ground. First of all, I do wanna give you a, a, a slide, just to back up next slide. Give you a slide of, if you can see that, that's the roll-off site, and I wanna show you the good work that's working with staff and D E P that have been originally, we're trying to avoid from wetlands. If, those of you that have been in the community a long time know that actually Carlson, the, uh, Carlson, the, uh, spring, the, uh, spring is right behind the roll-off site there, and we were, we have a need to stay away from the wetlands, but we found a, a corridor there that we could not impact those wetlands, but we can run on the backside of that roll-off site so that there's never a, an impedance to any entrances along the roll-off site. And so that's being changed right now, and we're gonna run on the backside of that roll-off site. And not, I, here again, staff feels confident to give us the, the permits for that and all, but just wanted to give you an update. Now, the piece that we particularly wanted to share tonight and ask, uh, for support on is the next piece, and it's actually kind of a, a list of our plan right now. When I, um, when I say the lower Hampton Springs Road, I'm referring to basically the end of the pavement as you're getting right there before the intersection on the, on the, uh, on the, on the pit camp road, and, uh, and going straight on Peterson Landing Road from right there up to basically the curve. That lower curve right there has very hard dolomite rock.
That's a half mile from-
Uh, even, 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 uh, not even that, we're talking about eight hundred feet is all. And, uh, and we, and I'll show you actually a picture here next, but we, uh, do need to blast that, and our request is that we have short periods of time each day during a four-week period over a, a, uh, Monday through Friday, meaning January twenty second, for, excuse me, July twenty second through August sixteenth, that we would be able to from twelve to three, shut the road down. It'd be well announced, so that people, if, know if they went out, they would need to be back before noon, and, uh, and or plan on staying till after three o'clock in the afternoon. And, uh, you know, and we will blast it, and then they will be able to come back out, and we'll do that each day.
I'll have a problem as long as you put it out at the sign.
Right.
If you get in there or not, and you're out fixing it, you may have to wait.
So pre-fee, we'll do that.
Pre-fee and get back in.
We'll do public service announce some time each.
Good.
Everything.
Yeah, I've written down there, every time. You've got this line, always from ninety eight to none, and-
Right.
It's a road there.
That's true. We talked to officials, let them, they feel like the best lanes, and we talked to, uh, um, we, we talked to law enforcement, and we talked to fire chief, who's here, we've made sure that makes sense from this one, so. If you look at the next slide real quick, just to kinda show you, it's kinda hard to see, but, you know, there's a little red marking there, that's where we're, uh, actually with, got eight hundred feet to blast, and, uh, here again, for safety reasons, obviously, during that first time, get a time to then repair the road, and get people in and out also. Twelve to three, Monday to Fri- Friday, so that's four weeks during the time, that's what we're asking for.
I need to say, cross, you know, so.
About ten feet, and it's, it's, it's dolomite, uh, which is what we've been experiencing, you know, down, down, further on, height climb zone. We will, out, just to be upfront, we'll end up destroying both lanes in that process, but we'll have a temporary brick road repair, and then in the end, we'll repair it completely when we finish the job.
I would do that, huh?
Yes, sir.
You should.
You should.
And I sort of, if you, I know Jim is, probably you can go behind, Carl, you might shut off that. And try to know, uh, know that, staff has been great to work with, and D E P got around more with that. Thankful to D E P for seeing the way, helping us, like we need to just-
What?
The way the weather's awful, we need to keep bringing up.
Good, very good.
How's life? Can we answer any other questions about anything that's going on?
I'm amazed at the amount of stuff hung out over fifteen miles. Because I was familiar when they ran the gas pipeline, I mean, they came in, but nine hundred people, you know, and they got all in and out. For sure, there's, there's projects, they're pipeline, I'm sure, gas pipeline. But, hope you come in under budget. Uh, they-
I, I'm along on that, we, that's right, I, we've got a few dollar things working as you imagine.
Yep. Well, see, I'm high up in the construction project, they never come in under budget.
Well, it's just like this, there's always something that's gonna be dollars, look, uh. Like, you had to change the route a little bit there, I don't know if that added cost to the project, or saved a dollar too. Thank you, board.
No, we appreciate you.
Yeah, appreciate you always, yeah. As long as you work well as staff, and you can fire engineer that, and you go on that. I think we can see your work together, and let this thing out, that's talkable. All right, and while that, we've got enough information for the review of that permit, that petition?
I believe so. I do have one question about emergency mon. For necessary staff and public, if there is an emergency on the water or whatever, and people try to come back into, into hit. What, what is the plan as far as response, whether it's stop?
We can, we, we obviously can shut things down, whatever stage we're at, and make the quickest route through there. But at the same time, it doesn't mean that, that, you know, we, we wouldn't have to put a, and that's the bulldozer in front of, in front of whatever people, equipment, to make sure it'll go away.
You're pointing to do that, you can-
That's right, absolutely, absolutely.
Good question.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you to ask you, you know, you ask that lime rock? Now, here, you know, like, that's what I'm saying. You think some of the bottles along there, if you don't want, you would like a rock, we can make-
Not this big rock, we can crush it for us if we have.
Not no butcher bar. Again, Lucy, thank you, thank you. You don't have a pellet gun anyway, do you?
We don't.
You won't?
I think it's prison.
Uh, they probably do a prison.
Yeah, I think, if it's not prison, but I think the other place would be your field across from Hampton, the front.
Hampton, the front.
Yeah, that would be a place.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, that brings us to item number- The board to consider adoption of a proclamation congratulating Smokey Bear on his successful presentation. Come down over, and welcome there.
That was good birthday in Taylor County, Florida, and a question about Jack Smith. And Jack Smith is now head of- Jack Smith is here today, and, uh, I am the, I'm here Derek Black, I'm the district manager for the Perry District. Uh, I cover Taylor, Dixie, Madison, and La Saya County. And I wanna thank the commissioners this evening for taking this opportunity to recognize Smokey Bear for seventy-five years of commitment to fire prevention, not just in Taylor County, but in the United States. And he's the longest-running public service campaign in the history of the United States. And it's still going strong, and, oh, Smokey came, uh, with me, took time out of his busy schedule to come here to Taylor County.
Welcome.
Uh, so nobody can say that, nobody say this is Taylor County, right here with us.
But I, I can interrupt, and I will have some later thing, motion. That's got turned into reading this entire proclamation. And then, uh, we'll let you continue, and you, Smokey, that won't talk to us, or we can take a picture, or whatever you want to do. So you got it? I do now, congratulations, Smokey Bear.
For the board of county commissioners, Taylor County, Florida, a proclamation congratulating Smokey Bear in Taylor County, Florida.
Hold on, Nick, I gotta have a motion in the second.
Oh, I know you do.
I have a motion, document, and reference second document, and then, all in favor say aye. Aye. Smoke you fast, and now you read.
All right. For the board of county commissioners, Taylor County, Florida, a proclamation congratulating Smokey Bear in Taylor County, Florida. Whereas on August ninth, twenty nineteen, Smokey Bear will celebrate his seventy-fifth birthday, which also marks his wildfire prevention campaign as the longest-running public service campaign in US history. Smokey message is as relevant today as it was in October four, as more people are living closer and closer to natural areas. So, no retirement for Smokey. And whereas, the mission of the Florida Forest Service is to protect Florida and its people from the dangers of wildland fire, and manage the forest resources through a stewardship ethic to assure they are available for future generations. And whereas, in the last five years, Florida Forest Service wildfire fires have responded to over two hundred sixty-one wildfires in Taylor County that burned two thousand one hundred forty-seven acres in millions of these threatening communities by the forest lands and adjoining infrastructure. And whereas, the Florida Forest Service is actively engaged in promoting and conducting prescribed burns and other wildfire mitigation practices to reduce the size and intensity of a wildfire that may threaten communities and other infrastructure. In the last five years, the Florida Forest Service has provided eleven thousand two hundred thirty-nine burn authorization to low-risk farmers and land managers in Taylor County to maintain and restore natural ecosystems and reduce the wildfire hazard on forty-four thousand two hundred eighty-one acres of land. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners, that Smokey Bear has congratulated on his seventy-fifth birthday and his continued efforts to remind citizens to be careful when using fire in natural areas. Further, the board commend the men and women of the Florida Forest Service for their partnership with Taylor County and Smokey Bear in wildfire prevention and mitigation duly adopted this eighth day of July, twenty nineteen.
Derek, you got any other comments?
Uh, I'd like to just follow up, that, uh, take this opportunity to thank the board and, uh, the wonderful relationships that, that we have with Taylor County Fire Rescue, Emergency Management Office. It really, it's a, it's a strong bond, uh, that does one thing. It brings better service to the people, the taxpayers of Taylor County, and it shows. We, we protect the houses, we're out there with the people, and we can't do it without those two agencies. So we really appreciate the support that you've always given them too. And with that, we would love if we can get a picture with the commissioners real quick, that would be wonderful.
All right, we thank you, Eric.
And we've got several, we've tried this for you.
All right. Smokey Bear. All right, tell us what you want.
Thank you, Derek, you what? Need to take the rain a little bit? Let's go.
No, don't get, one of the. All right. Three, three, two, one. Okay, tough, like, turn on the smoke. It's pretty funny. And the last one. You got the last one, I can't.
Have you just a four, three, two, one, right now?
Gee. All right. Thank you, Derek, we appreciate, appreciate all you do.
I appreciate that, I know. Thank you, Derek. Now, we've, uh, had to raise another proclamation, now, so the rest of Smokey Bear, it's like those folks coming down, and you know, taking that, and supporting the proclamation. I know, I know. Most of our divisions, really, and everybody, we should probably discuss. While I discuss, I want to make a few comments about Smokey Bear. Most of you know, uh, I'm a little older than seventy-five years, sure, I can remember Smokey Bear, in that little country schoolhouse, down the campus road, when I was about twenty or thirty years old, that was putting somewhere, you know, in the early fifties. And it's common practice, um, back in those days, that folks like my dad, and, we'd cattle, that somehow or other, the woods, you catch five, in the spring, learn off several hundred acres of cattle, come out of the trough, where you can take a walk, and fill them up, even if it's a lush patch. And I said, Smokey Bear, you know, educational thing, that is, children too, will help them solve that problem, the county has. And, you know, I, you know, during that time in the fifties, getting these burns in woods, you didn't have nobody, you just, if you box them out, and you took off. Changed a lot, don't try it anymore. But, I hope that's an interesting story, that Smokey Bear catches those too, in the early fifties, about ten or twelve years old, now you can get to out of it. Now, we are on. Oh, we never did, so, we got to, to, uh, uh, discussing, I was discussing telling a wild story here. All the parents up in town, any of us say yes, Smokey Bear, that can be done first, don't want to do that. Now, we are on item seventeen.
The board to consider approval of a request to add the historic spring meal cemetery to the Tampa County mowing list, as requested by Paul Barrett, U D District Board. The one that's gonna talk to this, is this.
Well, there's the recommendations that you should see on the front page, whereby we are recommending that the intersection sign today is correctly configured with a single stop on the minor street approach. And that we also do in recommendation number three, that you could provide some additional, signage or plaque below the stop sign, that indicates that the crossing traffic does not stop, and then supplement that with additional reflective, uh, strips on the sign column itself, which would increase the visibility of that.
So, what do you recommend, that, if we do anything, is number three, how about?
If we follow the federal standards for how to, how you sign roadways, there, it doesn't need to be changed, um, what I am recommending is additional measures that are allowable, that don't contradict the, the governing standards. So, it's just a more of a, an alert, an additional alert, um, that isn't considered a measure which would have drivers and users of roadways to those, uh, stop signs. And I will say that, um, when we get to the point of, of the decision, is that we added a, a fourth recommendation there, and that given that this type of request is really driven by the data and the physical characteristics of the issue at hand, is that we could address the much likely new right-of-way use permit, and instead of bringing that to the quadruple judicial legislative body, the body here, these can be handled either through the local director, or the county engineering department, because it is just a data-driven decision.
I agree with that.
It, well, you got, you have ordinances in chapter forty-two that address how the right-of-way use permit is done, is handled, over in forty-six, fifty-five, I think it is, there's a few processes, somebody agrees with that, so all the bases are there to handle it more technically and administratively, but give the, um, the request or the option to bring it to you if they were, uh, if they helped us satisfy the decision.
Let me ask the board for any comments. John, you're having, you're recommending, you're recommending, for the instance of business reach, if we don't wanna take it outside of the bracket, change the dynamics, so, basically, you can tell this, for people to use.
That's all it is, it's, it's really just alerting the drivers as they approach north or south on the minor street approaches, that it's a supplemental piece of information that tells them the crossing traffic would be on your major street, like an avenue, that they're not gonna stop when it comes to the intersection, they're not being stop controlled. So, they, the U D C D allows you the opportunity to supplement your stop sign with that plaque, and then they go one step beyond that, and our reference section's in there, is that you'll see it on some stop signs now, uh, whatever color the background sign is, they'll put the, uh, strip of the prismatic register, or the light of tape, that goes down the column itself, so as your lights hit that, it's just more obvious that there's something there.
We got one additional motion.
It is, and it's, um, every bit of what is recommended here, uh, in the first three, are consistent, you know, out of it with the federal guidelines.
That's true.
Yeah, if you see, if you put the compilation of my data, we pointed out.
I'll be glad you drew it, but, thank you.
Yeah, and that's what we did, is, um, you know, back in February, we took and collected traffic data, at that point in time, we only had a single, um, stand counter that tells you speed and acts as like the data in fifteen seconds, uh, fifteen minutes, ten minutes. So, what we did, we knew we needed another counter accelerator, so in May, uh, we took and actually put out counters on both approaches, uh, the major and the minor street approaches, because the evaluation required you to compare the hourly data or the fifteen-minute data on both approaches at the same time, so there really wasn't a way for us to obtain that data with the same counter, so it would be sequential, not consecutive. And that's why I gave you those references there, I would tell you what the data was in February, and this is what it is in May, and it was well below the thresholds that, uh, is actually required.
All right. Any comments, any comments?
I was looking for wisdom, now.
All right. Looks like they got it going up.
Yeah.
You don't got, looks like you got too much time to dump. I know, but, it, it is fact, the community is fact, it's written, so, you have to use the best again, you got, you got by the best, of course, yeah.
The traffic that we found on those approaches aren't to the level that the federal guidance suggests, or even encourages you to use a fullway stop hold. So, you kinda go through, and you look at traffic, you look, you look at the traffic volume, you look at the speed of that traffic, you look at site distances, approaching those intersections, and you use those, you have to defy the point at some, at some point in time, that once we exceed this threshold, then we will do this, for the moment, we don't exceed it, we don't do it. And, but the industry standard is the one that I use to determine that, and it literally was list the criteria out, very impartially, this is the data, this is the data, this is the data, what is this thing? And if they all come up those, then there is the natural conclusion to say that you don't need to change the stop control data on that intersection.
Thoughts, data.
That's all it is, for, I like, I like the data.
Yeah, do you have any thoughts on this?
I'm fine with what I've said, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Since I learned a long time ago, better off as an engineer. And, uh, I'm sure it comes back to that situation, that crossing the road, where we didn't listen to you.
All right.
We come back about it. So, I'm gonna have to agree with you, the recommendations, I just wanna have the other people, it is not. So, anyone who's gonna make a motion, or who's gonna hear the discussion?
Sure.
Can I leave on this, Doug, today?
Yeah.
I'm gonna tell, tell part, you are, really, State Park, State Happy Park, I live on St. Avenue next to this intersection, I'm a mother requested it. I understand the data, I said there are those, the last, over this weekend, watched my friend on that intersection, watched the people have to slam on brakes, keep hitting each other. So, I'm just letting you know, you put a four-way stop, four streets down next to the Baptist Church, and you got several four-way stops in other sections of State Happy that have almost no traffic, so the data may get in there, but in reality, I see what goes on, and the people in town, they were, there was, and so, I'm just letting you know, it is a safety issue, and I appreciate, you know, you taking this up, and I appreciate what you've done with it, but, then you notice that there will be further actions there at some point. There will be, I'll be able to, but, I say, I just see what happens, but, thank you for your consideration.
All right. Red light. Name of the dress.
Stand in court, I know one registered by State Happy, all the data that's been presented deserves sound. Uh, the two things we're not presenting are, in Lemon Street, you have a bar, and a lot of the people, when they leave that bar, go north, to go into this intersection. I don't think you're gonna ever change that, it's American Legion, uh, it's very popular, a lot of people go there. Now, the thing that was brought up for your consideration is that the marina on the river, one of the exits, and access to that marina, is on Lemon Street, which is a good intersection. That, and that's one of the labels, which means it's a control area. I would suggest that you ask the sheriff, the patrol of this area, at the appropriate time, as well as what you're doing tonight.
Mark, you've got a minute over there, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, then. All right. I think all of us, that's our fail, so we're ready to take action. Um, there's open for a look, it's good.
Well, I make motion that we, we take option number three, based on data, incorporate sheriff's timing, and if there's any further data drawn to our attention, immediately we can put some talk. I, I put some, just, we, uh, so, your motion does not set, give, really, your, your motion to take all four of those recommendations? No, if you're in, or, number three is part of the recommendation. Just don't, just don't resort to it.
And in addition to that, request, trust, yes. All right, would be a motion by Commissioner Barrett. That's the first second.
I'm gonna have a person, who really is a gal, who clerk, who clerk, second, and the motion of a thing that's a commission. I, uh, can I start first?
You, whatever.
I'm, I'm doing this. I clarify my own thinking. The, uh, recommendation, staff, even study, recommends the stop, and you have four things, and number four means one of the most important parts in your recommendation, is that in future, substance of request for intersection-related issues, you should follow the process of right-of-way use procedure, I might say that included. The first part, the first part of the recommendation is just a fact, that the Lemon Street, Second Avenue is currently in the regulatory figures, I mean, that, data shows that, and the second part is the U D C D evaluation considerations, traffic volumes, and accident issues, do not support provisional stop control, that's not really a recommendation, that's a fact that's been enforced. So, is our motion include just number three, was this asking for this, and that's sufficient?
I, I would respectfully hope that four could be included in, but I would agree that one and two could be considered, um, of, of, assumed it was anything.
Yeah.
You can't really, if you, if you go to three, you have to get asked one and two before it's separate. So, if you don't, as the body accepts number four, then you're saying that it's still appropriate to bring those types of requests, or what it is for.
You wanna make your motion, John?
Include.
Include number four. All right, all right, you got a good color set. All right, now that's it, we can recap this motion. The motion will include the, uh, cross traffic does not stop, supplemental plaque, and add this strip, that's number four. And, number four, substance of request, where it could be that, and the motion to approve, and, uh, we're also including another part, that board is gonna ask, assess that, something unfortunate, I share, and he's always, I think he's fond, but I've missing things to him to add anyway, so, uh, anybody else?
All clear, all one, thank you.
Lemon Street is the main street, two is the minor street, which one do we have as traffic factor? Is it that one? Now, did someone mention a water in code, I think, we could go, play with it, like, together at the five, is that what, did I get that?
You have, absolutely, absolutely, you have the American Legion, you have the Community Center, you have River Haven Marina, and all that traffic funnels up Eleven across Second Avenue. Second Avenue runs parallel to basically the main street between Act, where everybody's using Second Avenue now as the main thoroughfare to avoid first, so it's going through more residential than it is going down first. And if you, at some point, like I say, you'll have to do something about it, so.
All right, our motion, we've had the discussion, we don't get to give you guys a question, then, can we have any discussion?
In other words, what was all the same, but, red light right there?
No, no, you don't need a red light, but somewhere at point in time on Second Avenue, you're gonna need a, a couple of four-way stops, just to slow people down, and get them back over on First Avenue. Like I say, you definitely named it after walking trail in State Happy, and put up your nice little walking trail signs, and, and there's as much traffic on Second, it's about as good on First, a lot of that, especially with the locals.
Let me, uh, say that if what we're doing does not, does solve the problem, and gets them up down the line, more use number four, just to, uh, follow the right-of-way use procedure, where the actual commissioner's request, the public works, and the, and the public works, and the engineering department can address this later, and they got to come to that. All right. I wanna say, or the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say yes, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
I hope that you heard everyone, and just, and this, this meeting, more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twenty-two, the board to consider award of, well, it didn't stop, son, you got everything, can't.
Yep.
All right, would you read out what you could do here?
Well, do you want to hear the scores, or do you wanna just hear?
You can tell us who the one.
You can tell us who the one person, or is there a top?
Okay, there is one person, that would be Jan Hoffman.
So, I will ask for a motion that would appoint Jan Hoffman, who's a planning board, but from the commission, we've got it last week from America. Discuss, there's no need to discuss it. Back, back grid, right? I'll say, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Jan, congratulations.
Thank you.
And, since you ran it, part of the year and year, and I think I was only running more part of your team, uh, I, I, first hand, you know what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate you, awesome, what I should say. All right, now, we're gonna have one thing. The board should consider award of best man, recommendations for construction engineering and consulting. He, he, I served the contract, so that's one, he for grant project, railroad project, has attended by the grant director. So, the law's up, and it's gonna play grant director, sell a flower, and everything, required by federal regulations, right?
Well, it is, it is, in order to meet our obligation as the grantee of the rail grant, we are, um, we need to have a, a CEI service to actually be our boots on the ground, and to ensure that the work is being done, so they will, they will oversee the construction part of it. And also, it's, it's in two pieces, and then they'll have grant administration services as well, and then we'll have staff on our side, performing grant administration services. This is a large grant.
That means all?
Yes.
Now, is our owner, Mr. Conrad, has he reviewed this, or is it, is I go him for review?
Yes, sir. So, my question would be, if the board approves of the R two review committee recommendation to award this to, to lengthen, um, consulting, then we would also ask the, the board to consider reviewing the draft contract that I just handed out. And if the county attorney agrees with the draft contract, we would like to ask the sheriff to sign and ratify it the next meeting.
For a minute.
And that's only because there is deliverables due pretty quickly, and we need to engage, um, this company as soon as possible. They only received one bid, is for a flat fee of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, not one twenty-two if yours in the cover fee agreement. And that does leave some remaining funding for our staff to be, um, bringer.
All right, something that we need to do, because we don't know how to go, we don't figure out how to do it. And I like the idea of this, this whole time, since you, that asking board, go ahead and make sure this contract will lengthen, subject to review by our terms. And if he says the contract is a good contract, and he doesn't have any problem with it, because the motion includes instructions for the sheriff, which, uh, all right, who else has the motion?
I'm moving.
Motion by commission, damn. That's by commission, Murphy. Question or discussion? All say or no motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to get this one. Do you have anybody on this staff that has, that could be glued on the ground, or lift over somebody's shoulder?
No, sir, that's the reason we need this service. I'm sure Kenneth could do it, but we need him here. And, and part of this work is out of town, is in another state, and we really need someone who has rail expertise to, um, to be on site and conduct, um, all the reviews necessary. So, this is someone who can actually confirm that, you know, of this amount of rail ties is correct, and that the work is being done satisfactorily, to really oversee it on our side.
You got, you got more questions?
Yeah, you have tunnels, you have rail. What they need to talk, you should, you should work that one. But not so many, it's necessary.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, thank you, Tom. Uh, we are at number twenty-three. The board should consider approval to submit a Florida fire fighter assistance grant application. As a business, I, 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 Dan, is Dan still there?
He had to be two fire fighters.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I didn't hear that.
So, um, he handed off some materials to me, um, and this is basically, um, requesting the board to submit grant applications for our SBA equipment. And if we were to be awarded, um, the funding for this, it would lessen the fiscal impact of replacing this equipment by almost sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, the grant funding is for a hundred percent of the cost, there's no match, and the application period is from July eighth to July twenty-sixth. So, this is pretty working, though.
You just approve, just replace, this can, you can start to be a good one.
Yes, sir. And to, and to keep our fire fighters.
Keep our fire fighters, yes.
No problem.
All the motion about Richard Dent, from the second back of the movie? Any discussion? All fair, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, where are we now, the ones, we're on, I'm twenty-four. The board should continue discussion on solid waste operation, and given by county minister, I'll ask the one, to, uh, to take the lead here. Thank you, that's a big information, boss. I'm gonna check the library, to read, uh, an email from Chairman Seagull. It states Sunday, July about seven, seven thirty-four P M, and she sent to the one that got passed over here for a public record. Please share this with the board for tomorrow night, and also, I have had several people tell me the same thing. Thanks. All right, here's the body of the message. My name is Lee Cooper, and I have a vacation home at Cedar Island. We are located at twenty-one, four eighty, Osprey Road, I stand the venue, on eleven A, the RV, and Honey Smith, etc. We're only part-time at Cedar Island, and do not generate a lot of outdoor garbage. I think it's only fair that everyone owning property pays this hundred and forty dollars a second, that's the main point. Houses are campers. Actually, two-thirds is a lot, have two or three campers on them. Maybe doing this will generate enough to get out of the red, and a little extra upgrades and equipment. I don't think anyone was right about the fair way. Thank you so much for your time, Lee Cooper. Now, this, I'm Lee Cooper, and you had your vacation home. I did not know much, because you knew I got a vacation, my wife got a vacation home. But, here's the all I'm learning, I'm impressed in ten years. Law, I'm, I take your time, you're supposed to be telling us what all you know now.
Well, at the last workshop, the board indicated that there was an interest in repealing the exemption for RVs and hunting, and that it was possibly like to consider an assessment of a hundred and forty for all dwellings. So, I met with our county attorney, uh, last week, I believe, week before last, and we reviewed all of the ordinance for solid waste, because some of them are tied together. So, the RV camp ordnance basically states it's a third of whatever the assessment is for homes, for, for full-time homes. Um, I left the information with him. He wanted to do some further research, and he was preparing to go out of town, so we do not have a draft ordinance at this time. I would expect that hopefully at the next meeting, that we will have a draft ordinance to bring back to the board. Um, in the meantime as well, um, Gary Womble, um, said that he was going to visit a neighboring county, and look at their transfer station, look at their operations, and Gary, um, would like to give us, you know, an update on, um, the information he gleaned from that visit.
All right, Gary.
Oh, I went down to Cross City, just a, uh, kind of a block, invited down there. Went down there to get information, yeah, to see what they do, so I went down and looked at their transfer station. They gave me the names of people that put in the scale system, and, uh, basically, just to know, view exactly how they handled their, and, uh, both, for example, they've got like ten-yard containers, they dump on the ground, they load it in a eighty, yep, eighty cubic yard truck, all of that, so, using up the boom, just a little, very simple. And, they gave me the information to the scale person that installed there, they moved it from another site to there, but he installed it. I called him, and, uh, got a rough idea what a scale system would run. He said, about sixty-five, seventy thousand per scale would probably cover what we needed to do, if we, they were wanting to go that direction. I also called the DEP, did a follow-up, to see if we put scaling in the roll-off side, would, we had to make any changes permitting it. They said, no, just sorry it's established, but you just put the scale system in, it's pretty easy, just go ahead and do it. So, that's about all they had.
So, that's sixty-five, seventy, more, is that?
Oh, it's not like it's a tight, it's a tight schedule.
And.
This one probably would not be poured in the concrete, but you did know about the ground.
Be freestanding with a ramp.
Yeah.
Really.
Long way, exactly.
Right, and that's come a long way, you said, over the years, or maintaining and stuff like that. Old ones are a little bit, a little harder to get you to work on, but, but old one I saw, I have, for example, I think he helped us solve the new one down there. But, he, he had a lot of good information, but like I say, the transfer station was very simple, just a lot of stuff.
When somebody pulls up there with a trailer, stuff, waiting, did they have to unload the stuff off the front, or the people unloaded it themselves?
They unloaded themselves.
They unloaded themselves.
Right, when I was there, they got, they had some dump trucks come in with debris on it, they could dump it up there on the hill. They had, uh, regular cut, public coming in, they just went up there, hand unloaded. The containers that they have at their roll-off side, like, say, are like Madison, the small ones, and they just pull up, dump it up on the hill, you got a knuckle boom loads riding into the truck. They're on the hill, the truck pulled up sideways below the hill, they just dumped directly off the truck, and compacted with a knuckle, really easy.
Do they, uh, they?
Right now, they're, they kind of, with hurricanes, they kind of regressed backwards on it. At one time, they were charging for, uh, any kind of debris, if it was mail or anything.
Well, there's, there's one commissioner, I don't wanna charge the, the yard trash amount, if it's not contaminated. Now, just, just take, I, my roll-off side, here's the wood. The citizen comes in there, and he's got his mail, and they're not pitched, we claim them, you know, you don't throw back the garbage, even the mail. But we manage to haul that, the county managed to haul that out, through the, the, and not charge, and have a scale out there, some mixed stuff, if you wanna pay. And the C and D, and that's kind of good, that's probably a better word, which we'll take the refrigerators, we'll take tires, so, all I'm hoping to find is charging people for false wrongs in, uh, yard trash. And, obviously, obviously, there's a lot of crazy about that, and sort of that agreement to this time, and also, they're not obligated to pay. Would that work, or what? I mean, it, it, you still gotta call eleven A, somebody driving to pull this trailer loose.
Right.
So, uh, I also just before, for information, I talked to quite a number of people, and I've had a few people, but who have hunting camps, that are against charging a hundred and forty dollars for hunting camps. I've talked to a number of people down in Cedar Island area, who have RVs, and they got their RVs, other reason I'd be a hundred and six thousand dollars' charge, and they all think, yeah, you gotta do what you gotta do, you know? I, I'll take my fair share. So, I stand up. And lay up on a chair.
I would say, if, if, I think, if we could do one in town, Carlton would be a good location there, but you've got two hills there, they could pull in, come on the backside, go up, go right upon the hill and unload. That way, we don't double handle, Cross City's double handling there, that way, they, they would, put it in a container with all, like, the winds, or whatever, or struggling to load up. Also, the other one would be St. Hattie, that has to be down there.
Give that, give that.
All right, I, I, I'll go up with say, we, we got, we got something to do with the R, but.
I'm just talking at once a minute.
Yes, sir, come on up. Thank you, name of the dress, Mark.
Appreciate that.
My name's Gary Cooper, I'm Lee Cooper's cousin, we live on the same street, we have homes on the same street. I own and operate on Florida native, I own and operate a news network and service, a radio service, and online news service for rural communities, and farm news, and Florida shores, Alabama, and the deep southeast region. I travel a lot for work, I've lived and owned and property in several Florida areas over the course of my life and career. I bought a vacation home here at Cedar Island, near Peaking Beach, about fifteen years ago, on Osprey. In hopes of making it my retirement home, and did not do this in the future, I'm older than I was fifteen years ago, I'm getting my, I presently am a permanent resident of Marion County in the Cala area, so therefore I don't vote here, but I do pay taxes in this county. It's my understanding that homeowners like me in coastal areas pay the vast majority of the county's tax income. As a taxpayer in my position, I'm being heavily opposed to any fee that's not equally imposed on all lots in my neighborhood, especially those, in particular those, that have electric and sewer service to allow campers in our midst. Any proposal, in my opinion, to charge less is totally unfair, and it seems clear to me and anyone with logic, that it would be unfair to do so. Campers generate easily as much garbage as we do in our homes.
I agree.
Uh, and when you put three and four families home on a campsite, uh, and, you know, they buy everything elsewhere, and they buy their cars, their boats, and everything else elsewhere, and come here, and they, you know, throw their trash out here, and then go back home. Uh, we used to have a saying in South Florida where I grew up, which I don't even recognize my hometown anymore, but we had a saying, people would come down there and bring ten dollars in T-shirt, winter bind, go home with boat, unchained. So, it's important to note that allowing campers, as you have in the past, to move into begin with in neighborhoods like ours, with what was and could have been a far nicer neighborhood over time, with far newer in real estate tax values and growth values over time, than campers will ever be able to pay, or will pay, has already robbed us homeowners in the neighborhood of property values that are now boiling down while real estate elsewhere around the state appreciates handsomely, due to the population explosion our state is experiencing. We're now growing by a thousand people a day in the state consistently, and they don't expect that to slow down anytime soon, in the years to come, not months or weeks. We're growing by almost four hundred thousand people a year in the state. They're gonna go somewhere. There are good reasons why Henry County, in my opinion, is one of the poorest counties in the state, but it doesn't have to be this way. People will pay taxes without objection if they get a fair share of services and real estate value protection for their, for their investment. We pay a lot of the taxes in the county, but we get very little services in return, in my opinion. Homeowners like, like me and my cousin, are paying the vast majority of the county's overhead in taxes and fees, were vacation owners too. There were years when I was very busy in my business, I spent less than ten days in a year view, and I had others, and paid others here to come and take care of my property while I was gone. I used no services, but I paid my full fair share of taxes. Meanwhile, we're allowing the county to be overrun by people, and undervalued by people, devalued by people, in fact, who have plenty of money, but pay nothing equal in comparison. It's a matter of ownership, and ownership responsibility, in my view. The fact is, many of our free ride camper lots now have on them expensive campers and boats, that are worth more than my home. I got one at the end of my street, has three boats on it, probably two of those boats alone are worth more than my house, that built, and I got a three bedroom, it's not a fancy place, but it's a nice little cabin, I, I enjoy it, I wanna retire there. But, that's what we're dealing with, and it just makes no sense to try But that's what we're dealing with, and it just makes no sense to try to cobble together all these studies and the money and the time spent, when it's as simple, everybody pay their fair share, let's move on. If we let the values in this community improve like they should be, like the rest of the state is enjoying improvement, you wouldn't even need fees and taxes, you're at the alarm, with far out, outpace what you're getting for your hundred and forty dollar tax fee on the, on the, or fee for the three gardens. So with that, again, I just, uh, I hope you'll be fair. Uh, I'm willing to pay a fair share, but it's getting old to be looked at as the outsider in the bank account for a county where everybody else gets the services, and, and we said it, so I appreciate it.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, I've, I've, I've heard similar arguments, the one you, that was presented here in favor of, of loading up only a special of RVs. And, uh, that was, that was tremendous, in the title of the question. We got to leave this mission. Uh, take a look at this before we make any final decisions. So, what do you have anything else to say about, anybody else want to talk about? By the way, the RVs.
I'd like to say one thing, I've asked a lot of people. And seventy-five percent of them was fine, just pulling up and guarding everybody's thing, it was, they just let you see fair. And everybody, most everybody agreed that the camper would have this as much progress as on the, on the land.
I'm buying that. Thanks, thanks for all that. Sean, you hear him agree?
Absolutely.
We need to make things fair. You agree, sir? Don't you hear him, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Man told me, he told me, he, he wondered why we pulled up, but I'm going, I'm not, I'm not obligated. Everybody go ahead and bring them all up and stuff.
Yes, all right, that's four out of five, and I think Mr. Fisher is already pretty good at stress, he thinks it's a fair way to do it. But we got to wait until Mr. Fisher tells us what to do next.
We got a big turn down.
All right. And then we did this part of, if anybody asks to look, 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 look at the title, look at the, buy some tailors. Not pose a buy and a tailor, just oppose charges for yard trash, Gary's going to figure all that out. All right, I followed somebody who went down here by dark, and I lied. No.
No, it's not dark.
It's not dark?
You got, you got a hour.
I got a hour. Let's see, we're on number twenty-five. The board should consider adoption of a draft resolution which provides for the board to set a fee for disposal of vegetated debris. That's for the contractors to take their debris out to the roll off site, and the number that's in my head, Gary, is four dollars and ninety cents per cubic yard. Is that correct? You think that would cover our cost, I'll take the word. All right, board, what do y'all think?
I'm buying with that.
You buy that, I buy it, you know, I go with the representative.
They, they are rich, the contractor's are rich, they can do it, they're rich to do it.
Come for it, all right? Who's one of you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, that was, uh, Mr. Murphy, who said that fee is four dollars and ninety cents per cubic yard. And who seconded it?
I seconded.
Mr. Murphy seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, say no, the motion carries. Now, uh, out of number twenty-six, the board to consider adoption of draft resolutions which permit, to permit the board to set a fine amount for violation of density regulations as the attorney of the county determines. All right, we need to go out on the previous, and have a resolution titled red. So disregard the last motion, I, I overlooked, we need to read the resolution by title. Would someone make a motion to ask, uh, yes, make a motion to ask, uh, twenty-fifth, to read the title of the resolution. Now, that's the draft resolution, which sets the four dollars and ninety cents per cubic yard. And seconded by Commissioner Murphy. All in favor, the motion say aye. Uh, aye, and opposed, say no, the motion carries. Mr. Fisher?
Yes, sir. A resolution of the board, county commissioners, the Taylor County Board pursuant to Taylor County ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero four, which provides for the board to set the fee for disposal of vegetated debris, tree debris by a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Now, if you want us to do the first, or we already done it?
Say, you got to make a motion and second, adopt the resolution set match date.
All right. We're making a motion. All right, Sean makes that motion, then we can adopt the resolution, that's the fee, you get four dollars and ninety cents per cubic yard. And seconded by Mr. Dennis. And we do discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve the resolution, aye. Aye, and opposed, say no, the resolution carries. Now, we're on number twenty-six, the board should consider adoption of a resolution, all right, I picked up on this time. This resolution board should permit the board to set a fine amount for violation of density regulations. That's for our vehicles, it would be the fairer decision in terms. Now, could someone make a motion to ask Attorney Fisher to read the title of that resolution? I make a motion by Mr. Dennis. Seconded by Commissioner Murphy. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Fisher?
Yes, sir. A resolution of the board, county commissioners, the Taylor County Board pursuant to section two dash one twenty-six C of the Code of Ordinance, which permits the board to set a fine amount for violation of the code. Instead of resolution setting the fine for violation of the density regulations of section forty-two dash six fifty-two, four E of the Code of Ordinance, setting an effective date.
I second you. Now, the amount on that resolution is less than twice. Then we're on the resolution number twenty-six, to set the amount of fines violations for density regulations on RVs. You know, if you have two RVs or one, and you bring one in to shop season, you got to mend after shop season, and you don't take it off. Uh, anybody have any thoughts on what that fee, off the fee? I give a recommended.
Well, I was just going to say that in our Code of Ordinance, is section two dash one fifty-three B, that, um, regarding code enforcement violations, that the fine sits at two hundred and fifty dollars. So, okay. I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board, I didn't, something totally separate, but that two hundred and fifty dollars is something that's familiar, you know, it's, it's within our code for different counties.
Well, let me tell you one other thing on the vote rec citation, it goes to write off if they pay it. And if they don't pay it, it goes to the county court. If it's said like this, the county judge will give any, any amount of, uh, help with the violation of the county ordinance. And you have to pay forty dollars to follow that citation in the court system. And if you prevail, you don't have to pay any more money, but if you don't, you have to pay another fee. If you don't, if the court stays, the court's going to do it. And the person who got the ticket is not that to blame.
Your recognition is out of bounds, is that if this ordinance is passed, that the two hundred and fifty or whatever amount of dollars will go to somebody, but the county commission won't get any of it.
That's why you do the vote rec citations to know that if, if they don't pay, it goes to the hearing before the county court stops. So it doesn't hurt the court system unless they find it, and we have not been able to, not to let all this vote rec citation be it.
Well, what we got to do, the, the ordinance, we got to.
We got to interfere to, to make the funding guidelines here and back there.
The last on the name, we got the table. Right.
We need, we need to think about, see, if that would be, if someone's fine, and they don't pay the fine, and they don't move the trailer, who's going to end up having to move the trailer? And then, you know, that kind of thing. Well, we don't want to get into the same picture, wake them all in and figure out, just let the thing go, 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 go on their time.
Right. I agree. Now.
We need to get all that work out.
Let me make one second, then I'm going to call on, I'll get there with Cedar Island here. I listen to folks when I go down with family, probably listen to my family too much, but they, they, they network, well, they got a network for that too, now. And if we implement this fine system for violation of this, we're mainly talking about people that pull in an RV for shop season. Well, that ain't a shop season that can get moved, stay there all year, is what we're trying to tell them. Well, I've had discussions on the lawn, if you got to give people a couple of weeks upfront, get set up for shop season. And then you don't want to start, but they shop season, go to, uh, write tickets, and you get a couple of weeks to get them, and then, but nobody going to be prodded that way. So my family and his, but I'm getting some prodded, I didn't do, well, actually, you put season on, like, hundred dollars. They'll just pay a hundred dollar ticket, and, uh, not move it, and then pay about three hundred dollar ticket, and they still off the hook, and get in there all the time. But, but staying, he's got a good number of star guns. But, uh, I guess, guess my point is to anybody. You've made a great point, if we got to deal with moving out of there or whatever, the county gets that money.
Yeah, that's, I mean, they pay the two hundred and fifty dollars, at least every rest of the year. You know, if, if, we got to have that thing work.
We got to have that, boy, that's enough, instead of having to get it out there and get moved.
Well, y'all talked about having a tax violation fee in here, and that's not the area.
Well, I think, I turn to the guy. Well, I don't think.
We need to let him work all of it.
Now, don't let Carmen over all this again in the lawn. Yeah, I don't have any shot on it, and if you could, keep it up.
Was there any discussion about, um, you know, if they give you ten days to remove it, is there a fine per day or per week or anything like that?
That was, that was initially the second fine, we had to cut the second fine after the ten day period.
Well, I mean, just opposed to a second fine, I mean, it would seem to be, I don't know, I'm not the issue with it. If you're told you have to move it and all, and don't do it one fine, like you said, isn't enough, but if it's two hundred and fifty dollars, or whatever amount you choose, hold.
It always happens, but.
Yes, yes, sir, I mean, each day would be a separate violation, or even a week would be a separate violation, it would seem to be.
Yeah.
You know, um.
Back to the dead, let me rewrite this.
Okay.
All right, we do that?
I'm doing that.
All right, let's get a motion table this, one of the, as further renewed by attorney Fisher. We can table everything, do whatever they, they want.
I'm not going to say it's just about these people. Y'all need to allow a county attorney to handle that kind of stuff if they don't pay.
All right.
I'll make a motion, say.
Make a motion about removing, to table this out, to have it further renewed by the attorney. Studies don't tell them about the conversation, the law, they don't tell them, so, uh, whatever going on, what we need to do. Now, sir, if you feel free, call our attorney there and tell him, give him your instructions directly. All right. All right, I have a motion table. Uh, have a second.
Thank you.
Make a second, now, Commissioner Murphy, discussion, all in favor, say aye. 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 The motion carries. Uh, thank you. The law. We're on number twenty-seven, the board should consider approval of leasing agreement operating resolution. I, I follow word resolution. And a budget transfer from one cent sales tax fund for the lease of four vehicles of Genuity Bank County Center Fair. It was resolution first. Motion to ask attorney to read resolution by title.
I move.
To have motion by Commissioner Fisher, seconded by Commissioner Murphy. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Read the resolution.
I'm not seeing the resolution on my back.
Uh, I promised this man we're going to let him talk, I know that too, he's getting mad at us.
You heard.
Now, don't get him, just go back, and I can even not talk to him.
Sir.
Yes. This gentleman wanted to speak to my RV, and I told him to wait, and I said, right, leave me. Tell him off the road, right there. I, he thought, but he's good friend, hey, you want to talk, I forgot to there, man, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Malcolm, that's pretty much.
Well, go, come on, and.
I'm here, I'm here real well, and that's what I tell me your fines are going to do on this thing.
Uh-huh.
Well, that would be a one time fine, like, pay two hundred and fifty dollars, it's pay two fifty illegal now.
No, Sonny had a good idea, he might as well walk, walk out, every day, brand new fine.
It should, it should be, and I should, after, you know, give them ten days to come move it, and then after ten days, it goes to five hundred. I mean, they move them in on a day, then certainly come get them in ten.
Well, but we're instructing Sonny to talk with Stan, and keep it incorporated, I like the idea that every day is a separate sentence.
Well, the sentence is that, yeah. Every day, every night, you know that.
I know, I just get most people leave, order to say something, but I didn't lie with you.
Okay.
You wouldn't have let him get, you know, I know.
I love you, I love you, Malcolm. We were, we, we were getting in your direction, I can tell you, we got, we got to do something with it.
Yeah, we got to do something with it, this is a step in the right direction.
All right.
Get it, it's your time.
What I can tell you.
All right, thank you. All right, the law, we're, we're talking about leasing and budget vehicles, and there was a resolution, and I got a motion to read the resolution by title, and Sonny can't find it.
I've got it now.
You ready now, son? All right, all right, did I, did I have a motion, and I'm seconded. All in favor of the motion to read the title by, read the resolution by title, say aye. Aye, and opposed, say no, the motion carries. Now, you can go ahead and read.
Thank you. A resolution of the board, county commissioners, the Taylor County Board, which operates as the chairperson to execute the lease purchase agreement and escrow agreement with leasing two for solid waste and public work vehicles.
Okay, the law.
So this is due, um, came out during our strategic planning session. And there was discussion of exploring leasing of vehicles for public work and for solid waste. And we've had such a fun workshop since then, um, and I would say the past, probably since April, there is some correspondence going back and forth between county finance, the county attorney, leasing two, and Mr. Davis, who is here with us tonight from Capitol Drive. Um, we have obtained, um, guidance from other counties about their experience with this lease program, and we're at a point where we'd like to vote, to ask the board to consider the leasing agreement and operating resolution. And lastly, we just want to identify that the board does want to use one cent sales tax funding for these, for the lease of these vehicles. So, um, after some correspondence back and forth with our county attorney, I will say that he does have some angst with a couple of the articles within the lease. And, um, the last conversation I had with him was that he still wasn't happy with a couple of the items, but he knows that we need to lease the vehicles. And, um, so he's, credibly, I guess, approved, if that's the correct terminology. And, um, in corresponding with the lease company, their response is, there was only two items that he had particular angst about, and they have answered, um, that this is standard language within the lease agreement. So we're at a point where we need to ask the board if we would like to consider moving forward with this venture or not. Now, I will say that the two sections that Conrad had some angst with, um, includes a section for, um, rental payments to be unconditional, he did not like that. Our, the leasing company did state that that section includes cancellation for non-procreation, otherwise payments are due until the lease ends or the lease is paid off. And sort of can kind of help remind us how this program works, but basically, this is a five year agreement, but these vehicles are paid off every twelve and a half months. And we have the option after, basically every year, we have the option to purchase the vehicles, and, you know, step out of the program or have. and, you know, steps out of the program, or have a new lease vehicle. So every year, we'll have new leasing agreements.
Month, that's right.
Correct. Um, the other item that, um, Conrad had some angst with is a section regarding continuation of lease term by leasing, and the explanation we received from leasing two is, this is something that the county will use our best efforts to budget for future lease payments. So the expectations, who want to understand, and somebody can help me, is that they expect us to budget for future payments. Um, but again, Capital Trust, every twelve and a half months, will buy these vehicles and, and replace them with a new vehicle if that's what we wish. And Mr. Attorney, do you have any words of wisdom or clarification?
Um, just from our perspective, you know, Phillip, our job is to keep you out of the situation. You know, so when we start talking about having angst, there, we're looking at potential following, not things that we necessarily or genuinely think are gonna happen. One of the things that the lawn told me, that other counties have had good experiences with this, and that, I think, makes us feel good about, if there's anything else you would, that, you know, that's all going down. So, when we, when you say angst, I, we understand, just from what we've been talking about, they have someone who should make moves in all of their leases. I don't know about their ability or where they should, it changes the exact way we were like them, you know, the county, we stand together. So that's, that's our perspective.
All right. Then, uh. In my opinion, is, when we discussed this at the workshop, another time, is that we were in agreement to go ahead and lease four vehicles, two dump trucks, two Mack dump trucks, and two Mack roll-off trucks, four vehicles. And that our intention was just to pay the payment. Actually, two Mack trucks, fifteen thousand dollars each per year, well, they're gonna get a Mack dump truck for that price. And the, uh, roll-off trucks raised the back, and it was gonna take us out of what we're saying, that money. And, uh, we understand that if we don't have money, we can get a new truck, or we can buy it outright, get out the money for lease agreement. So, whatever we need to do to make this happen, I'm willing, and let's go in and do it for that. So here we go, the end of that.
Sean, do you have anything you want to add to this, especially?
I learned a long time ago, we lay back and let it back.
I miss that one. Very negative.
You say it.
Well, you were thinking that, yeah.
It's just safe. I, I, I'm going down.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, I think everybody, I mean, I, again, I'm not trying to beat the devil, but.
Yeah.
They, the, the terminology, uh, that's been discussed, I mean, I've run into this with four or five other county attorneys. I, I, I'm not there yet in perfection, where every time we write a contract, it's perfect for everybody. There's a lot of different interpretations by different attorneys, so I, I. We're doing this with seven, eight other counties, and, and their attorneys, you know, say the same thing, you know, we gotta do something with this, we're gonna do something with that, I mean, I love to learn all the tricks of trade. I love to sit down with the attorneys one day and find out what can we do to, so this shouldn't go through with flying colors every time. But it just hasn't happened yet, but I'll tell you what, every time it gets through the system and the boards all agree, then you get into that, that basically never-ending cycle of trading trucks every year, and you're seeing the savings that you're gonna start seeing, then it all makes sense. You know, I mean, it, it's a, I, it's very rarely do you get in a situation where two people win, and hardly ever do you see three people win. Well, this is a deal where Taylor County's gonna win, and Capital Trust's gonna win, and then somebody's gonna win on the backside behind your trading. So, it's a, it's a good deal.
And then by the chair, we have a resolution, we need person to, uh, go to a resolution. And then vote, vote the leasing agreement.
I think the next thing is, you will release the lease, and then the resolution transfer the money. On the transfer, are you transferring just enough for this year to get us to September thirtieth, or you, what's the transfer cost?
Well, I, I think actually, um, we, we just, I'll have to get with Daniel on that. We have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars budget in the solid, for solid waste, to purchase one vehicle, but I believe that the one cent fund's in a separate fund, and it's not actually transferred into a solid waste fund, so I think that's just something internally we need to work out. I just want to make sure that the board agrees that we use one cent sales tax funding for the lease of these vehicles.
Because I think there's some guidelines in that one cent sales tax ordinance that needs to be applied on the transfer.
My first, yeah, if I understand, we need to approve the leasing agreement.
For five years.
For five years, with a lease of four vehicles, two dump trucks, and two of the other dump trucks. All right, so we have that motion first. I move. Motion by Commissioner Dennis. Second by Commissioner Murphy, discuss. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no, motion carries. Now, we passed this, uh, authorizing resolution, which would allow you to do a budget transfer of the amount.
No, sir, I think the operating resolution is just to allow for the purchase of the four vehicles.
All right, we're ready. Yeah, I mean, we're doing the same thing twice, but we'll do it that way. All right, and he, uh, he's, uh, approved the resolution. We want to make a motion to approve whether, motion by Commissioner Murphy, or second by Commissioner Dennis. Discuss. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Now, the last item, I think I just need a concurrent from the board that we will use one cent sales tax funding for the lease of these vehicles.
All right.
Think how pretty the budget transfer.
Well, I don't know that we need a budget transfer, Miss Amy, I think that's something I'll have to work out with Daniel, but if we need a budget transfer, she can put, she can add regulations to the next agenda.
If you want to make a motion to not approve the, you take that off the sales tax. All right. Good question, that we authorized staff to take the lease trucks, the lease of these four trucks, our one cent sales tax money, which can be used for capital and fuel. And that motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Dennis, discuss. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no, the motion carries. Since you take that, whatever it is, if you don't, if it's a mess, it's a weird, you got, you got to start into the game.
And I will say that, um, the trucks that are being replaced, one for public works, we want to feed one of the dump trucks to be used for turnoff, um, crew, and we'll plan on selling the other, and then, um, Gary wishes to, to roll off trucks, um, because that way we'll have an extra truck in service, and then the international, we can use to move cans and things like that. So we'll, so we're only planning to sell one vehicle.
All right. Now, we're on the other number.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll call you, thank you more, we actually have two trucks to sell.
Oh, okay.
So, uh.
Okay.
Second half. The lawn, where are we, on the number, uh?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, board to consider approval of a budget transfer from MSTU Federal Reserve for personnel and operational costs, as the duty of county administrator. And you can talk with, uh, I think, with the, with the cost of insurance code.
Yeah.
I have no problem, you got to keep the door, it's thing running. We want to make the motion. You have to make the motion to approve the budget transfer from MSTU, and I forgot that amount. Boy, you got it. Sixty-five thousand, what's the?
Sixty thousand, one hundred and ninety.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Dennis, you did seven of them, Mr. Murphy, seven of them, motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, the motion carries, the, uh, the budget transfer is approved. Now, county administrator, discuss between Mr. Michael Island and you, who's with.
Uh, before I, um, go into that, I, can Christie and Marty give us an update on the weather forecast for this?
Yeah, I saw some carrying.
I had a handout here, this is, well, I don't know if it's up to date, the two hours we've been sitting in here, but this is the five o'clock PM update. Everybody doing okay this season?
Doing good.
Good.
They put up, didn't have a care, and I, I'm not on the game tonight, I'm talking to friends.
You're gonna get y'all.
Oh, thank you. You say aye, I'm fine.
I'm fine, you know.
Right.
So, the area of the tropical low pressure is around the middle of Florida right now. They're expecting it to move, it's actually moving westward. It was gonna come through Taylor County, in Lower Park, Taylor County, now it's Florida, it's all happy area, that's where it's gonna come down from. It's also, when it gets into the Gulf, Wednesday mornings, could be quicker, could be later, it's gonna be moving west. The grass, if you have a tach, are the rains percentages? You see our counties split in half here, starting with our colors, but, uh, three to four inches in our northern part of our county, four to five, in our southern part of county. So that would feel a lot of rain.
That supposed to happen a lot, huh?
Yeah, that's about three Saturday, I believe. Three Saturday.
We don't cut any hay between that and.
And on the last graph, you see it's eighty, eighty percent now, chance that it will form something. Uh, one thing I wanted to ask you is, if you want to turn on our sandbag, there are some areas in the county that have, you know, water stains. I think it's, it's okay with that, but I see him down with it now, but, um, there will be people that ask, and they're always here. That's about it, it looks like we're gonna, you know, we have a lot of rain coming, just wanted to be aware of that. All right, thank you, Marty, do you have anything else?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Do they have this fact, that it gets out in the Gulf, is it gonna do it, and you promise?
It may get strong, we don't know, know yet, but it is gonna move westward, towards Pensacola, Louisiana, that way. For now.
All right, hold on.
I have several items, um, for you. Um, the first one is, now, if you recall, I think a couple of workshops ago, we reviewed, um, our recent asset survey, and, um, myself and Daniel were asked to go through the survey line by line, um, to see what kind of impact we would have. Um, we have done that, and unfortunately, um, there will be a budgetary impact. Um, what we did was, we, like I said, we went line by line, and we, we included in the amount to increase, um, properties that are currently covered, but is under insured. Now, this is new, this is construction replacement, so, um, and it's at ninety percent. Um, we added in any new assets that were valued at over twenty thousand dollars, because we felt like that was a pretty safe threshold to use. Um, and we took in consideration any property that would be considered property in the open. So an example of that is fencing. While, um, our fencing does, um, have a large value, we did not cover our fencing as separate assets, because if the fencing is connected to a building, or is part of a building, then we can, we have coverage up to twenty-five thousand dollars per current. So our hope is that if there's an issue with the fence, it won't be the entire fence, but a section of the fence. So with all of that in mind, with the new assets, and these are buildings that were built some time ago, that were never covered, and bringing most of them buildings up to value, the total overall budget increase for next fiscal year is forty thousand dollars. It is spread across several funds, but it is still an impact. And we have included these numbers, um, as, for the budget for next fiscal year. Um, what I would like to do is to communicate with our insurance company that we need to add these assets now, and it will have a small impact for this year. But, um, now that we're aware of some of our assets that are under value, basically going into hurricane season, um, the recommendation would be to cover these buildings three hundred thousand.
Just that those, those buildings, if you say, assets covered, could be possible. Especially, any questions you have to answer?
There is a question about that, um, and, and I have sent a question to the insurance carrier, because there is, uh, there is a group of assets that have, it seems, has a street address with a Perry, um, Perry included in the address, and we're just wondering if, is there just a miscommunication about that? So, we, so we're working that out. Yes, yes, that is one of the questions. So we feel like, I mean, we have spent quite a few hours going through every line item of the asset sheet, and feel like that we're at a place that we can be comfortable with, and the board can be comfortable with. So what we'll do is make this insurance available to you during budget workshops. I just wanted to let you know that we had completed that, that task. And then update, um, at our last board stop, there was discussion regarding the Granger Bridge repairs versus replacement, and the board requested that a report be made regarding the eligibility of the bridge inspection report. Um, and we have found that the bridge report is not available as a public document. However, if the board wishes to advertise for proposals for bridge repair or replacement, the document could be made available by filling out a particular form, um, requesting that the form, you know, be completed. In the meantime, staff has continued discussion regarding possible repairs to the tiebacks to stop further degradation, and staff is planning to schedule repairs of these tiebacks in approximately four weeks. It will be at least four weeks. Um, after the tiebacks are repaired, staff will reach out to DOT to request inspection of the temporary report repairs and provide a load rating.
I'd like Mr. Dudley to come up and give his opinion on those piles that Chip wants to leave them all down at the bottom, and what do you think the state would do, even if we had a tieback, would they approve them that way?
Island condition was one of the items identified in the first report. There is, there is severe marine board damage to some of the, uh, local water lines. It is a possibility if we, and thi- this, this is our, just speaking in general terms, this is our hope. It's just, we realize right now that we have both of us on the beach side, and the tieback capings as well. It was probably a standard galvanite type caping that just couldn't stand in this environment. So what that does is it, it takes away that holds, the holding back aspect to it, and they have the opportunity to, to move into the water source, and you've even seen some of the pile caps taken, have a little bit of rotation there. Our hope is, is that we can, with minimal disturbance, go through and reestablish and connect those tieback cables. The dead man's are still in place. In doing so, we can put that tension back on the abutment wall. What that's gonna do is it's not going to take and reform the backup verticals, but what it will do is it'll, it'll act as a means to keep them from moving any further. There is a possibility that DOT will look at that and say, okay, you have stabilized this bridge, and they will continue to monitor those tiebacks and make sure that the condition's, um, working. Pilements in front of those abutments are the only thing holding it back now. So with these additional structural measures holding it back, it's going to have, um, increased carrying capacity. Will they take it all the way to, uh, up? Will they take it all the way to a, a small passenger vehicle with non-emergency vehicle passage? I don't know. Will they go to a golf cart, um, capacity? Probably. But what we'd like to do is let us take and do this as our first step, so that we don't go too far, because we know, the more we do, the more asked we are to cause more problems. So if we can just do this first leg of it, and then get their C D I, or just first by bridge inspectors, come out there and say, can we get a minimum three tons, which is the lowest that they're going to give you, that three ton passenger vehicle rating, that's a non-emergency vehicle, up from this, what we would still classify, and I think they will as well, a temporary measure, just to keep it from getting any worse. It's possible. You know, I think the, the golf cart aspect of it, that seems to be the, you know, we went from the pedestrian, we got that, and now those golf carts seem to be an important, um, important piece to get. There's a great possibility we can get that. Will it go, will they agree to go all the way to, um, a vehicle standard? You know, there's a chance. Um, I don't think they would open it back to a ten ton bridge rating like we normally would see, but, you know, they will, they would consider taking it up to that three ton aspect. That's, that's our, that's our ultimate hope, is that they would consider that. But I can't sit here and tell you that they're going to, and I wouldn't even suggest that they're going to, but I think they'll look at what we've done as a positive means to keep it from degrading any further.
Well, that's improved, uh, feeling what you thought they'd do, but that's, that's fine, I mean.
I think they're going to give you the golf carts, the motorized traffic golf carts, um, and they will probably give you, there's a chance they'll give you that vehicle at least for the next few years, until those, those pile caps, they, they represented everything in percentages, so when you start seeing that marine board damage, you get a little bit of work on the bottom of the pile, when you see the end of your pile caps continuing to hit their head even more, they're going to get to a point where they're going to be back to where, okay, I was no longer needed to put a vehicle on it. So if we can, if we are able to get it to where a vehicle can get across it, say, for the next couple of years, you're great. You know, two years of the six maybe that we may have to wait to get some funding, you know, it's, or it's two of hibernating years we have to wait to get some funding, but I, I would still not sit here and tell you, we need to invest the funds to replace that bridge, or to go through and... What I presented to D O T in, in writing was, okay, if I replace this pile, and I replace the abutment, and now I replace the garbrows that are missing on top of it, you still call that temporary repair? And she said, no. Said, okay, so that clarifies in my mind that if we do what really needs to be done, you're not going to get any money to replace that bridge, because you're going to have to do that best at your cost. The reality is, is there is safe, adequate access on both sides of it, period.
What, what do you think, it comes to the top, I follow this?
I think an hour of shooting from the hip and thinking, you know, probably, um, five grand to do both sides of it, something along that, just with the, the fourth count for labor, of all the material facilities. You're going to have to do handwork when you get up there to the abutment, because I would hate to run the risk of that operator getting a little too anxious and hitting that abutment, all in all sudden, they're good half of it. And we're sitting there, ooh, and, you know, then we will have to do something. So we're, what I'd like to do is basically trench above where the tiebacks were, within a safe distance from the abutment, and then, like it or not, get the shovel out to it by hand the rest of the way, thread those back through, and then carry back, put tension on those, back to your dead man, and then repack it, and then call it, or even expose and tell the C D I, just come here and look at what we did. You know, that's, I think that's the best, cheapest way to achieve what we want to achieve for the longest amount of time with the lease investment.
That sounds good, yeah.
Well, I think you're right, I'm, I'm misspeaking.
All right, the loving two of them.
Okay, I think we've just got good news from here on out. So, we are planning to move forward with the lighting hat, these boat ramps, um, to be coastal parks and Steenhousey boat ramps. This is something that the board voted on some time ago, and we have, um, got to the point where we're ready to move forward with installation. The total, um, installation cost will be seventeen hundred dollars. The recurring cost, um, will be thirty five hundred dollars combined annually, and this is for the installation of, um, looks like sites at Steenhousey boat ramps, these are LED lights, and A at Steen Beach, between the boat ramps and the coastal parks. And we will be using our, um, bed tax dollars for this. I just wanted to advise the board that we are ready to move forward with the lighting of those areas.
Drop out any of them, do work.
Yes, sir.
Go, get them out of the park. I'm just hoping they'll notice enough that they put some of the LED lights, four cup of holes, and sure, they're looking at me every day, it looks good.
I got LED lights in my backyard now, I still do. Ten dollars it's costing more than a buck, ten or a dollar. Uh, sometime ago, a student came, gave a question, spots down this main Steen Beach Drive, whatever happened to that?
I don't think that's...
We are authorized, so we have one foot, she, of course, didn't care who you want to light, and there you are. So I hadn't been put on that.
No, I haven't heard about that before, from the line.
It was discussed.
I do, I have it before my...
Yeah, I got chewed out by a different guy, I'm just, I came, because I got out down there, and y'all got chicken rabbits, and got off of that. I got left. What I was going to say was, I'll pay for the lighting.
So when we researched, um, this issue, we did not see in a minute that the board, that the board approved that portion.
We did.
Right.
I was going to say, it is.
Well, I haven't resurrected that part yet, so we did want to move forward with what the board did approve some time ago.
We're going to do it.
Okay. Now for the best news.
All right.
I'm very excited. So, we received a call on Friday from Gareth Leonard, he is the S W C Gulf Restoration Coordinator, and he called personally to let us inform us that S W C would be willing to enter into a sublease agreement to site a boat ramp at Hagan Coast.
All right.
So, um, now, where that leaves us is that we will move forward with a grant application for feasibility studies, and for, um, property appraisal for Hagan Coast project and, um, the Hudson project, because that's what the board advised us to do, and then we will still have to go through any permitting issues with D E P. But we did at least get, um, agreement from S W C that they would enter into a sublease agreement. Now, he did say there would be conditions, but the conditions that we discussed verbally was maintenance of the area where the parking, the boat ramps and parking and recreation area right there, and that we would need to maintain the road, which I think is very fair. But we would not be required to maintain the entire property. So...
Only in both years.
I don't think we're that far yet. First, we'll have to do the feasibility study to even site the boat ramps there.
Yeah, I, I, that's, uh, you can down there, come ahead, we get that channel wide enough and deep enough, while the treasury is looking at it, that's it.
We need to find out what we have C E P and S W C, if they'd ever agree of this big channel out there, before spending any money on anything.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm hoping that through the feasibility study portion of it, that that would uncover not only that, but any mitigation that would be required as far as reclaiming dredging. So this is, you know, part of the answers to questions that we've had, but I felt like it was enough that we moved forward with the previous direction from the board, um, to obtain the feasibility study. But I'll continue working that part.
Well, I mean, I, I decided, boy, come on, on P D Phillips' side, then wasn't allowed to, yeah.
And I don't, and I think the concern is that will D E P permit any new, new dredging? And the initial, um, feeling from the staff was that if we have S W C enter, you know, by our side, that maybe we'll have better luck with D E P. But I will continue reaching out to D E P and see if they can give us some guidance. And when we, when we had the discussion with them, there was some discussion about mitigation and recreation and, you know, topics such as that, but I do not have an answer about whether D E P would, would permit dredging of a new channel.
You say you have to, you have to hit them, with them tied up, it's a good bridge.
Well, we would.
If they say you get ready, then we wouldn't have to do that much. I guess for him, it's coming from there.
Well, that's the feasibility study.
I mean, the feasibility study, well, they don't like to get that question asked.
I would hope so.
I mean, I, I, well, I'm thinking that's part of the feasibility study.
Well, I would think that we'd go through a clearinghouse where we, we could get some answers from D E P at that time. But we would not submit grant application to the Gulf Resort until mid-August, so that gives me some time to continue reaching out to D E P and see if they'll give us any indication at all. And I don't know at what point they will, um, they may want to wait until we have the feasibility study completed, but I'll continue working on that.
Thank you.
All right, for the best news.
Best news, couple of...
The best news.
Oh, best?
The best news is that the bidding on the old hospital ended today. We had, um, how many, twenty bids?
I can't remember.
Oh, excuse me, I spelled it zero. And the sold amount was three hundred and ten thousand and fifty dollars.
Are you kidding?
I am not kidding, I have a...
Oh, are you kidding?
Do you have a name for the people on that?
We do, we do. Three, one, zero, oh, five, zero.
Boy, I had to drive by looking at that, I sort of have a transition by every day. Just saying. Gee, what are you getting, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, and get rid of this?
I tracked it, we paid, and it was around a hundred thousand, so I almost saw it on my share today, when N S brought me this information.
How long, how long would that take?
It'd be like three weeks, about four.
About four.
Or something, about four, it's a little difficult.
And the, and the problem is, now, they have how many days to pay?
We allow, they, they have five days to handle the money aspect with respect to G U B. So the, it'll be basically sitting there waiting on us. We, in our special instructions, allow ninety days for them to come through and complete their portion of the project. So in the meantime, with, with the visiting comments, we can ask, I don't know, go ahead and start up preparing for the...
You said three hundred and fifty?
I had to look at it several times. Three hundred and ten thousand fifty dollars.
I've been looking at it every day, and when I saw that, I thought, mm, mixed up on the numbers, it said that neither one.
We're better than this, we can just be left, you know, break it with him, put it back out.
Well, if they do not pay, then G U B will go to the second highest bidder, and on down.
Yeah, there's only, with, um, G U B's account system, if they have bought on their bid, they basically enter far from being, uh, participants anymore, and then G U B wraps down to the next bidder. And if you were, look at the dating history when you were going through there, you saw there was a couple of guys that had some kind of less power than were back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, so there was quite an interest between the two of them. So I, I totally expect they go and do a vote by vote, and then they're paying their obligation once they've done that bid, um, because these are justified, valid, there.
Somebody else should, they'll be asking you for a tax benefit.
Sure.
Yeah. Now, here's one, huh?
I thought that was a city that's in our...
Yeah, we, that's, we go along, wow.
How long did it last?
Fifteen years?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, the long time, long time. Well, actually, out of the hospital, where we live, it's low there, and that's been leased, more than fifteen years ago. Now, we are, uh, at some comments and concerns from folks, but not in the doubt.
Thank you, calling from the one river side, Steenhousey. But later in the meeting, there was some comments about traffic in Steenhousey. I'd like to remind him that this next year, twenty twenty, has been scheduled, and still is, to my knowledge, uh, First Avenue repair, replacement. It continues to be marked, the people that live in Steenhousey and the ones that come there for any length of time, hide their voice driving on First Avenue, so they don't step on the other. Uh, once First Avenue is redone, the sidewalks and the whole thing, it should help alleviate some of the traffic on other streets like Second Avenue. Uh, if it comes up to where a construction schedule for First Avenue is questioned, or the timing and all, please look at it real hard before you, or you, like your engineer, agree to moving it back any further.
If you can find, please, the explain, have a way to get it pushed out, if you know. But we're going to...
Thank you.
Okay. May I ask some folks? Who would like to speak to the board? Board International, I would start, Commissioner Murphy, you have any, uh, bring your turn on. And we should tell. Mr. Lewis.
Hi, you're in.
And Mr. Davis, that's, that's the thing. That's first. And no stress. Our turn. I'll ask them, look, thank you. Thank you, bye, Commissioner Lewis. Got this again, Tom? Yeah, yeah.